Good morning. We'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your first item is to call the meeting to order and approve your agenda. Your agenda is in order and is ready for your approval.
Motion to approve your agenda.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is to receive your General Manager's report. Every quarter, we like to recognize our best and brightest operators, as well as our outstanding security officers. First, we'd like to bring forth an operator from our fixed route contractor, Keolis, Aaron Emanuel. Operator Aaron Emanuel has been a professional operator for more than 20 years and is a 2-million miler driver. Two million, yeah, I know. Aaron was instrumental in the Bus Rapid Transit Startup, our BRT startup, and has served as a line instructor, revenue instructor, mentor, and a member of Accident Review Boards. Aaron is the example of what a coach operator should strive to be. He comes to work with a positive attitude, treats all passengers with respect, and as a result, has received numerous commendations for his customer service. So congratulations, Aaron.
My name's Aaron, and it's been a very hard and dedicated two married miles, and I want to say thank you. And customer service is like an oil on the gear to keep the engine going. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize an operator from our contractor, Southern Nevada Transit Coalition, Bob Peterson. Bob has been with SNTC since 2009. He drives seniors from Mesquite who need to access doctor's appointments that are only available in the urban areas of Las Vegas and Henderson. When a 50-mile section of I-15 was closed last month from severe flooding, preventing Bob and his passengers from returning to Mesquite, Bob remained calm, professional, and sprang into action, putting the passengers' safety and needs first. Bob got our passengers home, safe, and sound after the roads were opened. Thank you for your service, Bob, and congratulations. Oh, good.
Most people don't even know where Mesquite is, let alone people who work there.
Wait a minute.
I just want to say thank you for the recognition. It's been a joy to work for Civil Rider out of Mesquite. Thank you very much.
The last recognition today is for three officers from our security contractor, Allied Barton. On the rainy morning of July 28, 2014, Officers Jeremiah Polk, Ryan Hayes, and Justin Teasup witnessed a crash that left a motorcycle wedged by a semi-trailer's back tires. The officers got out of their vehicles, raced to the victim, and quickly dialed 911. The victim became unconscious and stopped breathing. The officers performed CPR on the victim, and during the course of the event, the victim stopped breathing another three times and had to be continuously resuscitated by the officers before medical personnel arrived. While working together as a team, these officers performed a courageous act while attempting to save an individual and rendered selfless service in time of emergency. Congratulations to our Allied Barton officers.
Say thank you for taking the time out of this meeting to have us here. Obviously, the situation that brought us about is unfortunate, but we did what we could, and I appreciate it.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for having us here and giving us this award. Have a good day.
Thank you, everyone. Wish we could have did more for the situation, but luckily, we were at the right place at the right time. But thank you for the recognition.
And we're done with our recognition. Councilman Ross, and Commission, you asked us to come back to you regularly with an update on our fuel revenue indexing progress. So we do have an update report for you. We have new numbers. This is through October 9 of this year. We've had several indexing updates. As of today, a total of 64 design and construction contracts have been awarded. Of those contracts, 23 are construction and 41 are design. These 64 contracts include 43 small local businesses who have gotten work, for a total of $153 million and approximately almost 2,000 jobs, 1,974 jobs. Specifically, we've had groundbreakings pretty much in every jurisdiction. And the city of Las Vegas had their first fuel revenue indexing groundbreaking this quarter. The Main and Commerce Improvement Project includes new sidewalk ramps, repaving and landscaping, including trees and planters. In addition, the project will bring new green bike lanes, yay, which will provide cyclists a safer way to travel around downtown Las Vegas. The project has created 104 jobs and is scheduled to be completed fall of 2015. In the city of Henderson, they had their first fuel revenue indexing groundbreaking this quarter as well. The groundbreaking was for three projects, including Eastern Avenue, Whitney Ranch, and Warm Springs. The projects include repaving, sidewalk ramp replacements, and the addition of new bike lanes. And these projects created a total of 60 new jobs. In Clark County, there are several design and construction projects this quarter, including construction on the Clark County 215 Beltway and design for traffic improvements on Lake Mead Boulevard and neighborhood rehabilitation project on Pebble Canyon. City of North Las Vegas also awarded a few construction and design projects this quarter, including roadwork on Centennial Parkway and design contracts for traffic signal improvements along Commerce Street and Gowan Road. That is our conclusion regarding our fuel revenue indexing update.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Quigley, would you go back to the slide on the jobs and the projects and the amount of dollars on the street?
Sure.
And I hope everybody can see that little symbol in the right-hand corner of all these slides. That symbol is on every reinforced concrete box I see throughout this valley, certainly out on US 95 and the widening project that Endot is working on right now, as well as the flood projects going down Grand Teton to take care of those flooding issues from the Kyle Canyon area. But I want people to recognize that symbol, because I think that symbol says a lot about what fuel revenue indexing does for this community and how it's impacting our infrastructure, how it's creating jobs, almost 2,000 jobs, $153 million on the street. This is huge. And so I appreciate this report. I would like to continue to see these reports as time goes on, because the more we use that symbol and the more people recognize what that means and how it impacts their lives, I think we're going to be in good shape when it comes time for voters to make this thing permanent, and we can continue to do what we want to do as a transportation board and as the board who represents the flood control district as well, because this is significant to this community, and I want people to recognize that symbol. So folks, when you're out there driving around the streets, take a look at that symbol. If you don't have a bumper sticker, you need one. So Ms. Quigley, if you can make that available for all of our audience today, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll echo that, but I just had a question. On the green bike paths, which I've ridden on, what's the length of time that that material or color is expected to stay?
To last before it needs to be resurfaced? Mike, you want to address that?
Anybody from the city's team?
It's been a tough environment with asphalt bleeding, but it's over a year.
Oh, okay.
They need to be refreshed.
Okay. And then crosswalks. I know that all of us are dealing with crosswalks that peel, because the paint apparently doesn't exist anymore. Are you aware of any new products that are out there that local governments can be looking at?
The challenge, Commissioner, is the asphalt content and the type of oil that's used does really well with cracking. We don't have, we are, those are in good shape when we repaint them. The problem is that the next design, and we've looked at different ways to skin the cat involving industry, it's just difficult to maintain the flexibility of the pavement and the oil.
So the crumb rubber is not an issue, because they're using that in some places, so that's not been anything that's helped in one way or another. It's the oil content. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Cycle through. Yeah, our contractors and their subcontractors have been great partners in getting that logo out and educating the public on how these projects are being funded. Tracy Larkin and I recently did a presentation to the Rebel Business Network, and as part of that effort, we created a video together to kind of show how Endot and the RTC do work together in considering transportation in Southern Nevada. And so we thought we'd share this video with you. It's just about three minutes.
Transportation is part of each and every day for most Southern Nevadans, whether you're traveling via car, bus, bike, taking a flight, or even walking. As important as the efficient movement of people is, transportation is so much more than that. It's also about the movement of products, goods, and services, as well as ideas. It's how the best ingredients get to our world-class restaurants and how libations get to our top-notch clubs. In 2012, 54 million tons of freight were moved daily in the U.S., and domestic freight ton is expected to double by 2035. Freight transportation has a critical role in your personal quality of life, as well as our state's economic health.
Much of that economic health is deeply rooted in our travel and hospitality efforts. In Southern Nevada, 47% of the workforce is employed because of tourism, and it accounts for a $45 billion impact to our economy every year. In 2013, Las Vegas alone held more than 20,000 conventions and had nearly 85% occupancy in more than 150,000 hotel rooms.
It's all part of the same package. When the visitor comes to Las Vegas, they expect the experience that they expect. Transportation is a fundamental component of that. Moving people from one part of the destination to another part of the destination makes the experience. So the transportation strategy, the transportation offerings are vitally important to how our consumer perceives Las Vegas as a place to visit. 20 years ago, we hosted 15 million visitors. Today, we host 40 million visitors. Someday in the near future, we'll host 50 million, 60 million. There has to be a long-term strategy of how to accommodate these customers, and transportation is key to the success of the future of Las Vegas.
Not only do our visitors need efficient ways to travel into Las Vegas via our roadways, they also need ways to move around our city, whether they are driving, taking limos, taxis, or public transportation. New properties and attractions are opening in the resort corridor, which means we'll have more visitors, more employees, and more vehicles on our roads.
Along with that increase of people and vehicles, we can expect even more traffic congestion on Southern Nevada roadways. Our roadways are already in need of transportation improvements to help relieve growing congestion levels and increase safety for those on the road. Right now, the I-15 corridor between the Spaghetti Bowl and Sahara Avenue averages four accidents each day. Overcapacity on the freeway contributes to traffic issues like accidents, air pollution, noise pollution, travel delay, and decreased quality of life.
And congested, inefficient freeways and roadways directly impact drivers and the ability for public transit to take people to their jobs, their homes, their leisure destinations, and more. While transit saves riders money and gives them freedom to relax, work, or communicate with friends and family, investment in transit also benefits the community as a whole. According to the American Public Transportation Association, one of the largest benefits of transit includes the revitalization of business districts and local economies. Public transportation allows employers to tap into larger workforces. It builds revenues and increases property values. Southern Nevada has 39 public transit routes, which carried more than 60 million passengers in 2013, as well as 50,000 bicycles, which, by the way, is more bicycles than even the Portland Transit System carries. The RTC operates one of the most efficient transit systems in the country, but we can't afford to be comfortable with our current success. We must continue to move forward and make advances in transportation that will benefit not just us today, but generations to come.
So when you wonder how transportation affects you every day, the real question is, how doesn't it affect you? Transportation is driving everything we do.
This is Tina Quigley with the RTC.
And Tracy Larkin-Thomason with Nevada DOT, asking, what impact does transportation have on you?
Well, kudos to Tracy Larkin. She was the originator of the idea, and our teams worked together to put it together. And with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, that concludes your General Manager's report. Your next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report.
Thank you, Tina. Just very quickly, I'll update the board on Project Neon and the I-11 Boulder City Bypass project, Phase One, that Endot's doing. On Project Neon, we issued the request for qualifications, so started the pre-qualification process for design-build on that the last week of September, so we put it out a week earlier than we beat our date there by a week. Industry Day was held October 1 to see what groups were interested between the contractors and the engineering firms. We expect to have three to five design-build teams pre-qualified for this project. It's a half a billion-dollar design-build project. The offers will be going out on several properties that we're acquiring, and we're taking, just about every month, we're at the Board of Examiners for any legal settlements that we have with property owners. So the right-of-way acquisition is going to be the critical path for the project that's controlling the schedule. So this procurement for the design-build team is taking some time, but it's really contingent on the acquisition of right-of-way to start work. On Boulder City Bypass, I-11, we have a public information meeting scheduled in Boulder City on October 21. That's to cover the naturally occurring asbestos issue, update the public on that. It's going to be held at the Elaine K. Smith Center in Boulder City, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The idea of a supplemental environmental impact statement is not likely, so it's not going to delay the project. It's just a public information meeting, and we'll take any comments for a period of time after that from the public. So it's following the environmental process. Last month, and in previous months, we've had some questions about the express lanes on I-15 on Project Neon and also the connection to US 95 high-occupancy vehicle lanes or carpool lanes. So we've asked our project manager, Jeff LaRude, to make a short presentation to the board today on the, where Endot is studying the HOV system in Las Vegas Valley, and that's a major component of that, since it's going to tie US 95 HOV lanes to the I-15 express lanes. And Jeff's going to talk about what we're planning on there under Project Neon and as a whole for the valley. Jeff?
For the record, my name is Jeff LaRude. I'm a senior project manager with the Department of Transportation, and I'd like to give you a brief PowerPoint presentation on the status of the Southern Nevada HOV plan update. So what I'd like to do is give you a little brief background of the HOV plan, the original plan, the purpose of the update, the recommendations for the proposed HOV system, and our next So the original HOV plan was published in June of 2007, and the reason for the HOV plan was, at the time, the 2030 forecasts, even with the build-out of the regional transportation plan, still showed heavy congestion on the Las Vegas area freeways. So this was an attempt to look to see what the HOV lanes would do for the Las Vegas area. The plan came up with a near-term and a long-term priority system. In this slide right here, the green depicts the near-term solutions, while the purple depicts the long-term solutions. These solutions were also prioritized in a ranking, and if you see here, they're numbered from one successfully. And what I'd like to point out is, on numbers one through five, we've done a really good job of implementing the HOV plan, short-term projects at this time. Numbers one and two are the HOV lanes from the Spaghetti Bowl that go out to the northwest towards Ann Road, and that's going to be extended next summer out to Durango. Number three is the direct connection of the Summerlin Parkway area, and numbers four and five are on I-15 from the Spaghetti Bowl down south to Silverado Ranch Boulevard. And what I'd like to point out is, right there at the Spaghetti Bowl, where four and one meet, when Project Neon comes in, that's where we're going to have an HOV direct connect flyover from the median of US 95 to the median of I-15. And once that's in place, we'll have 22 continuous miles of managed lanes. So the current system currently operates with two-plus occupants. Motorcycles and emergency vehicles are eligible to use the lanes, while trucks with more than two axles are not. They operate during the weekday peak periods, and the access is continuous. The express lanes, on the other hand, allow all vehicles to use the lanes, including trucks. They're operating 24 hours a day, and the intent is to have limited access on those lanes. So why the update? Since the original study, the RTC has updated their travel demand model to include the mode choice element, and the mode choice element gives a much better analysis of HOV demand. Additionally, the model is now looking at 2035 projections instead of 2030 projections, so we have better data available. So with Neon coming online, the connection through the Spaghetti Bowl with the HOV connection, the department thought it was a good time to update the plan. So these five bullets right here are how the plan was broken out. We're going to validate the 2035 RTC model with the mode choice element, identify the Phase One HOV system near-term priorities in the Neon area, identify the Phase One HOV system priorities on I-15 between Sahara and Blue Diamond, update the overall HOV plan. That includes the direct connect access points to some of the interchanges, which I'll speak about a little bit more later, and then the workshops and public outreach. Some of the proposed recommendations coming from the update, this depicts the near-term HOV system, which is very similar to what the original study shows. We've got one lane of HOV lanes starting in the northwest, out around Durango, coming southbound on 95 through the Rainbow Curve, hitting the Spaghetti Bowl with the direct connect HOV connector to southbound I-15 and continuing down to Silverado Ranch. This slide here depicts the long-term HOV system solution. So starting in the northwest at 95, once again, we have one lane in each direction going down to the Rainbow Curve. Once it gets to the Rainbow Curve, it picks up another HOV lane, so we have two lanes going from the Rainbow Curve to and from the Spaghetti Bowl. As you go through the Spaghetti Bowl to the 515, it drops down to one lane in each direction and continues south down towards the 215-515 interchange. On I-15 itself, I'd like you to notice that on the north section of I-15, north of the Spaghetti Bowl, our model doesn't show that the travel demand is there for an HOV lane in the year 2035 in our long-term priorities. So it actually does pick up at the Spaghetti Bowl, though. South of the Spaghetti Bowl, we have two lanes in each direction warranted down to the 215-I-15 interchange, and then south of that, it continues as one lane in each direction down to St. Rose Parkway. And finally, on I-215, out to the west there near Summerlin, our travel demand show that we can, or that we have enough volume for HOV lanes triggered through southbound and east through the I-15 system interchange, all the way over to the 515, just east of the airport connector. So these are some of the proposed recommendations coming out of the study at this time. Again, we'll still propose two-plus occupants. Motorcycles and emergency vehicles will be allowed, but trucks with more than two axles will not be allowed. The hours of operation would be lengthened from 6:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m., so that gap that we kind of have right now between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., or 3:00 p.m., would be filled with the hours, or would be allowed to just have HOV at that time. And then we're also proposing just to have limited access at this time. So speaking of the express lanes, so now that we're going to connect US 95 to I-15 with that direct connection, we had to do something with the express lanes to accommodate that. So what we're doing is, with the construction of the HOV flyover into the Neon gateway, the HOV system will be extended along I-15 to provide 22 miles of continuous HOV lanes. And how we're doing this is, we're going to take one of the existing express lanes, convert it to an HOV lane, and then the second express lane would be converted to a general purpose lane. So on that stretch on I-15, we would have one HOV lane and four general purpose lanes. Another thing that our study evaluated was the direct access ramps and the HOV flyover ramps proposed in the original study. Seven locations were identified at St. Rose, Blue Diamond, Warm Springs, Sunset, Hacienda, Harmon, and Mead, and four will be taken forward to the stakeholders for further discussions in those locations, are Blue Diamond, Hacienda, Harmon, and Mead. In regards to the HOV flyovers, the original study showed that we needed an HOV flyover going to and from the east towards the airport from I-15 to 215, but there wasn't anything warranted from the west. Now with the 2035 model and the mode choice element, we have identified that we have enough volumes coming to and from the west to trigger an HOV lane as well, an HOV flyover. So our next steps, the initial modeling and analysis are complete, and it's time to get out in front of agencies, stakeholders, and public for input and feedback. We're going to be taking our recommendations to these folks, considering hours of operation, vehicle eligibility, limited or continuous access, locations for direct access and flyovers. So this outreach is going to take place over the next couple of months, and hopefully, we'll be able to work through these operational details, receive and incorporate feedback from the stakeholders, and finalize our HOV plan. So with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Jun Kaliani?
Thank you. Do we work with DMV and anybody that does driver training to make sure that the curriculum, as well as the driver's test, anticipates how to use an express lane and get in and out of one, along with HOVs?
Boy, that's a good question. We can't, I don't know if we have them incorporated as part of our stakeholders or not, but we can definitely get them.
Because I've driven a lot, but I'm telling you, some days, I'm like, whoa.
Well, you know, it's funny you should say that, because I've talked to people that they treat the express lanes like they're HOV lanes, so even if they have two or three people, they're afraid to, or, I mean, one person, they're afraid to use the express lane.
Right. And so, yeah. And then I see people cheat all the time in the HOV lanes, and it just ticks me off, because they're, they use it even as a passing lane. It's just amazing to me. So we need to work with a highway patrol and start nailing more people, in my opinion. But that might be something to take a look at, because at least for our young people or first-time drivers in the driving test, just to practice how the heck you get in and out of one and how you transition when you're doing the express versus the other. So I just throw that out there as a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Chairman. Councilman Ross? Jeff, why would you change the, why are you recommending changing the hours of the HOV lanes to seven, or six to seven, and mixing the 10 to 2 slot?
Because what's happening is, the travel demand for the HOV lanes actually goes up, and with the connection, with connection to the Spaghetti Bowl, we're going to see a lot better use of that 95 section, because right now, people are getting over to the right to go southbound onto I-15. But once we actually have the flyover connection between I-15 and 95, that HOV lane will be utilized a lot better, and so that's why the hours will be warranted that way.
I kind of like that time slot, because I can jump on that HOV lane. That being said, I want to piggyback on something Commissioner Jun Kaliani mentioned, and that's cheaters, who are not following the law and using that as a passing lane or their own private lane, and really, I know there's nothing we can do about that, but I think Endot should have its own freeway force out there and ticketing these drivers who cheat, because it's driving me nuts as well, probably all of us. And I use that corridor, I mean, two or three times a day, so it gets quite frustrating. And I like the 10 to 2 slot. That's just going to slow me down now.
You're trying to catch my dog.
Yeah, didn't work. Well, studies have been done. Those residents in the northwest, they're not the ones that are cheating. It's other people in the valley that are out there. Yeah. I haven't seen the final report, but that's what I've been told. Jeff, thank you. Now, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I had one more question for you, Jeff. The little notch going into north of the Spaghetti Bowl into north Las Vegas, I'm really surprised that, is the width there, is the volume just not there to do? really surprised that, is the width there, is the volume just not there to do an HOV lane going into north Las Vegas, heading to the north?
Yeah, well, you know, there's so much truck traffic right there, I think it really dilutes any kind of HOV demand right there, but that's what the model's showing us at this time.
Even on the 2035 model?
If I could add, it also is anticipated that we'll widen that section, so that's included in the modeling of the traffic. So, although we're widened up to Craig Road, we're going to widen all the way out to Apex eventually.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Separate from the Project Neon component, all the other indications where HOV lanes will be built, does the current right-of-way exist, or would we have to expand portions of the Beltway and I-95 heading out towards Henderson?
Well, the current right-of-way, speaking of I-15, right now, with the one lane in each direction, we'll have the current right-of-way for that. Ultimately, we'd like to have two HOV lanes in that section, and when we go to two HOV lanes, we'll have to widen, and I anticipate there to have to be some kind of right-of-way takes for that. I-15 is currently being studied right now, so that'll be incorporated into their study as far as how to handle any kind of HOV lane. On I-95, would we need right-of-way on I-95, John?
No, I-15, yes.
How about I-95 west of Spaghetti Bowl?
No.
We have the right-of-way. So, west of the Spaghetti Bowl, we have the right-of-way.
Other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And that concludes the Director's Report.
Thank you, Rudy.
That brings us to item number four, which is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment, those wishing to speak on a specific agenda item. Now is your opportunity. I have no cards. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. That brings us to your consent agenda, which is made up of items five through 37. General Counsel Greg Gilbert would like to make a comment regarding item number 37 prior to your approval.
Thank you. Item 37 is essentially the issue concerning the retention of legal counsel to file in what's called an amicus brief concerning the city of north Las Vegas issue. I just want to make it clear that this is a vote to approve the retention of that legal counsel for the purpose of filing that brief, but that doesn't mean that the legal counsel will be off to the races to do so. We will manage that spend and make sure that it's appropriate, and start that type of activity when it's time to do so pursuant to the actual protocols at the Supreme Court. Thank you.
And Commissioner Jun Kiliani?
Thank you. And so, similar to what we did with Flood, I'd suggest that we also, you and Chris Figgins, maybe work together with whoever in the other jurisdictions. We may need some statutory changes, and maybe start looking, because that may be a, we may not get there on the Supreme Court, so if there's some ways to better define what our role is, planning-wise and that statutorily, and we can maybe work on a bill draft or something along those lines with the legislature.
We will do that. We've been in fairly robust discussions with all counsel that this would impact, and are aware of the impacts of the Nevada Supreme Court's decision, and we'll take that to heart.
Okay, and then, I was just looking at the backup for the salary, for Mr. Chapman, it's $2.50 per hour, but associates are $2.50 per hour. I thought associates were generally a little bit less than the main person.
That is definitely one way to look at it. The rate is the same, because it's blended.
Ah.
So, as opposed to Mr. Chapman's normal rate, which would be more than that.
Okay.
We just have a blended rate.
All right.
And it is capped.
Okay, yes, that item.
We had that discussion earlier, that you and Mr. Figgins would have the ability to start, stop, manage these dollars, so they're not just billable up to the not-to-exceed number.
That is, that's how we're proceeding.
So also, on that agenda item, include Commissioner Jun Kiliani's recommendation to start working on or analyzing potential legislation.
We will do that.
On that item, and the entire consent? Motion on the floor? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Members of the Commission, that brings us to our one non-consent item, which will be handled again by General Counsel Greg Gilbert.
Hi, nice to talk to you again. I think this item, similar to the last time that it came up, which is the shared bus stop pilot program, we're going to invite parties that would be interested in making a presentation, thank you. Namely, I think Big Bus is here to make a presentation. We'd ask that they come down and make that presentation, and any other party that wants to be heard on that, I suppose, could be heard at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Brown, members of the Commission. I'm Kimberly Maxon Rushton with the Law Firm Cooper Levinson. Before we begin, Chairman Brown, I was wondering if it would be possible to utilize the overhead. We do have handouts that we'd like to disseminate to the commissioners, and you're able to follow along with that, but if possible, for edification of the public, I'd like to be able to use the overhead if that's possible.
And there is a dot somewhere in the middle of that. Perfect. I think we're ready.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. On behalf of Big Bus Tours, I'd like to thank the Commission for the opportunity to appear before you today. I'd like to begin, Chairman Brown, with a brief video, an overview of Big Bus Tours Thank you. Big Bus Tours is the result of a merger between two well-known international scenic tour operators, Open Top Site Seeing as well as Big Bus Tours. They currently serve 16 cities throughout the world, and basically transport 4 million individuals on an annual basis. In addition to their scenic tour services, they also provide airport transfer services and shuttle services here in Clark County. But their commitment to our valley doesn't end, or doesn't start and end just with the shuttle services and with the scenic tour services, but also includes multiple involvement, or involvement with multiple organizations, trade organizations as well as nonprofits, including Opportunity Village, Leadership Las Vegas, the LVCVA through PowWow, which is a leading trade and tour show here in Las Vegas or throughout the world, as well as shuttle services for First Friday, specifically to shuttle individuals downtown during First Friday events. In addition to that, they never miss a parade. Open Top Site Seeing regularly volunteers both their vehicles, as well as their services, to both the city and the county. But what makes Big Bus successful is...
Hold on just a moment.
I just want to stop you there, Mr. Chairman. On your second line item, the bus donation to the city for the Mountain Ridge Little League team, Commissioner Brown and I appreciate that, as we represent those families and that baseball team out there, so I just want to say thank you before you move on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But what makes Big Bus successful is not only their scenic tours, but also their unique marketing style. And specifically, what they do is front-door service to city attractions in the cities in which they operate. In addition to that, they do street marketing, and they have street ambassadors there that are responsible not only for ticketing and sales, but also to provide helpful information to passengers and tourists about the sightseeing experience, and also for the benefit of making their experience more rewarding. In addition to that, Big Bus Tours has a long-term relationship, not only with the companies that they serve throughout the world, but also has a global partnership with United Airlines. If you've been on a United Airlines flight in the last two months, you've seen as part of their safety video, Big Bus Tours operating here in Las Vegas and promoting not only tourism, but also safety. Currently, they operate using two regular routes here in Las Vegas. And as you can see from the diagram, there are two routes, as I indicated before. One is the downtown route, and one is the Las Vegas strip route. Unfortunately, most of the stops that Big Bus Tours is required to use are in the back of the resorts, and what that's led to is tour reviews referring to this tour as the Las Vegas Boulevard Dumpster Tour. And thus, the reason why we're here before you today. We're looking for a solution to this problem. We're looking to be further ambassadors to the city of Las Vegas, and to ensure that the tourist experience is a positive one. And we're willing to work with staff to address the concerns that they have raised and that other members of the public have raised before you. But we can't do it if we don't have an opportunity to do so. Over the past two years, Big Bus Tours has conducted multiple informal studies of the flow of traffic on Las Vegas Boulevard. And recently, for the purposes of both neutrality and accuracy, hired Silver State Traffic to conduct a study to review specifically the stops of RTC on Las Vegas Boulevard to determine whether or not it would be possible to utilize shared stops. Specifically, the traffic study looked at, was conducted over two days, one random day selected during the week, and one on the weekend, and surveyed three stops on Las Vegas Boulevard over an eight-hour period. What you're seeing in the diagram here is the frequency of stops by RTC buses at the Monte Carlo, which is a double-bay carve-out stop on Las Vegas Boulevard. Next is an overlay, same day, frequency of RTC stops, and now includes Big Bus Tour stops. Granted, this is just simply a snapshot of one day when Big Bus Tours would otherwise be operating, and it does show four occasions in which there would be an overlap at the specific stop between Big Bus Tours and RTC, thereby providing ample opportunities for consideration of a dedicated pilot program. We appreciate the consideration and the time that staff has spent in working with us on this matter. We appreciate the time and consideration of the commissioners in reviewing this, and we respectfully request the ability and authority to move forward with the pilot program. At this time, Chairman Brown would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Stay close.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else wishing to make a presentation on this item? Okay, let's hear from staff.
Thank you, and thank you, Big Bus, for such an illuminating presentation. It's very helpful to us. After looking at the presentation, it actually is helpful to understand a few points, and I think that after you understand staff's recommendation, you understand why we think that having a tour bus zone dedicated to tour bus operators is the appropriate approach for Big Bus and other tour bus companies that would like to operate in the corridor and throughout the valley. What we're presenting today is not much different than what we've heard on prior occasions, although all of the information that's presented has been validated, and we have had the opportunity to meet with Big Bus and other interested parties that are interested in this bus stop pilot program. From a legal perspective, what we have come to understand and establish is that, as it should be no surprise, that RTC has the sole authority over its bus stop facilities, and that's authority that's provided to RTC by statute. With regard to a certificate of public convenience and necessity, the purpose of that analysis is to understand who would be operating such tour bus operations, and in this case, the Nevada Transportation Authority has the authority to provide those types of approvals to tour bus operators. If we were to ever consider such a pilot program, of course, the only parties that would be able to use our facilities would be those that are legally able to do so and properly insured to do so. With regard to public impact, or potential impact on existing contracts, there's no question that, as the board heard before, there would be impacts with regard to the bus stop facility itself, and the impacts on advertising, the impacts on the actual volume of usage as a result of more patrons being located at that stop. And the party that we are under contract with to maintain those facilities has expressed deep concerns over how they would have to maintain those facilities, and how that would increase a burden on their expected contractual obligations. With regard to impact on insurance, we bring this up because obviously, more people, more confusion, more volume, more coming and going, whether it's vehicular or whether it's just walk-by traffic, causes more opportunities for, you know, injuries, damage, confusion, and risk, something that I'm sure all the lawyers in the world are excited to hear about. But, from our perspective, we're in the risk mitigation business, and so when we see opportunities to do so, we attempt to do so. All parties that would ever use our bus stop facilities would have to be properly insured to do so, and it's something that is procurable, but something that would have to be accomplished. And with regard to who would be a party that would use our bus stop, though, again, it's within RTC's sole jurisdictional authority to decide. The only, the question would be, would it be limited to one party? I think we've made our recommendation on this in the past, and that has not changed. There would never be a time when we would suggest that one should be selected over the other. This would be something that we would open up to all parties that would want to share our bus stop facilities. And that's an interesting transition point for us, because as we want to avoid discriminating in terms of who would be able to use it, we must necessarily understand that it would be open to all. And open to all means a volume to all, and a different type of impact on the operations of those facilities and the areas around those facilities, including the turnouts, traffic patterns, all of those wonderful things. Now, in the past, M.J. Maynard had provided some information concerning the extent to which RTC looked at peer agencies and how they handled such situations, and I'm going to steal M.J.'s thunder here and continue to talk, but butt in whenever you like, M.J. Of the peer agencies that were consulted, I will report that this is not a favored approach. Sharing bus stops is not something that public entities or agencies want to do and do not do so. With regard to our situation, which is the resort corridor, I will tell you that our, the travel patterns and the actual corridor that we're talking about here is different. It's distinctly different in its characteristics and presentation than any of the peer agencies that have similar sharing opportunities, of which many, if not all, do not do. There are a few occasions when agencies do in fact share, and that is because they're required to do so. And this is a distinguishing feature between this RTC and our jurisdiction, and the surrounding Clark County, by way of example. And this is the reason why it is our recommendation that instead of RTC providing authority to share bus stops, there's a more appropriate jurisdiction and authority to hear such a request, and that authority and jurisdiction has been around to hear that request for the entire time that we've been having... time that we've been having this discussion with companies that would seek to share our bus stops. So with regard to stakeholder feedback, clearly, we had quite a groundswell of participation at one of our board meetings when we were talking about this program. And so what we did was we listened, and we went out and spoke with all of those that had something to say concerning this type of pilot program in and of itself. And what we've determined is that these arrows and the words next to them are things that would in fact occur from the perspective of the parties that would be affected. There would be an impact to on-time performance, and this is something that was echoed by the operators and by the drivers that were interviewed. There was a concern about increased dwell time, especially during peak periods. There was and is a concern with regard to customer confusion. And I would say that these are more than concerns. These are things that have been experienced as opposed to just hypotheticals. With regard to loss of advertising revenue, there was in fact a concern that the operators of the shelters, outdoor promotions, would in fact lose market share concerning advertising, which, as you all know, they're entitled to as part of their contract. And with regard to maintenance costs and safety concerns and, more importantly, added congestion, these were running themes from all of the parties that stood up last time and others that had issues with regard to sharing those defined spaces in the bus stop areas. I alluded to this before, but I, and it may be obvious when you look at the other jurisdictions, but the Las Vegas Boulevard is a unique environment. The strip and its corridor has traffic patterns and volumes that are distinctly different from all other places where these types of operations are envisioned. I'm not a technical person, so if M.J. wants to jump in, she certainly can. But the main theme here is that the congestion, the volume, the patterns, the expectations of those that ride the bus in the strip corridor are simply different than anywhere else, which is really one of the reasons why having a distinct tour bus facility for tour buses actually makes sense. So all in all, what is the ultimate recommendation and how does it impact what we're here to discuss today? First, Big Bus and other companies that are invested in our community, they may continue to do so. Nothing here changes that. This recommendation won't change that. And I think all in all, with regard to where RTC sits from a technical perspective and from a legal perspective, is to simply say that we would encourage and support Big Bus to the degree, and others, not just the Big Bus is here, so it's in my mind, and others that would like tour bus zones. And we would certainly stand ready to support them in that endeavor if they wanted to apply to, let's say, the county or a city or an entity that has a public works department that wants to establish that type of facility. So with that said, I think the issue for the board today is whether the board would like us RTC staff to continue to investigate the validity and merit of a pilot program or whether you would like us, in fact, to perhaps support Big Bus and other tour bus companies' efforts to get tour bus zones through the entities that they would more appropriately be asking as opposed to RTC. With that, I will conclude.
Comments, questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you. Both parties, very well done. Kim always does a great job, but also very succinct. And I think that's part of what we're trying to deal with here is what works for us in public transit at this point. And I have ridden hop-on, hop-offs around the world. I like them. I call them that, whatever their name is that they do. But I don't believe it's the right venue to have them co-located with our public transit. It's mixing two different models. However, I would say that the approach could come to our local governments, who could then look at identifying potential sites, not a lot, because we have to look at the traffic flow, but getting some turnouts that then would allow any private sector company that opportunity. And I think that that should be explored rather than the RTC board making a decision to change our work model. So I just throw that out because I think it's really more our public works departments that can have that say-so over maybe some specific spots that would allow, rather than having go to the back of the house, because that is not necessarily the best way to do it. So I just throw that out for discussion purposes, but I personally don't support having them co-locate at our sites. I think there's just too many impacts on the public as well as our transit system. But I do appreciate the addition of what they bring to the tourism industry.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg, can you pull up the slide on your stakeholder input, please? Kim, would you, can you mitigate any of those concerns? That's the one right there.
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, of course.
Again, for purposes of the record, I'm Kimberly Maxon Rushden, appearing on behalf of Big Bus Tours. And in response to your question, Councilwoman Ross, I'm at a loss as to where the safety concerns would come in specifically. As you are aware, as a company, a certificated company here in Southern Nevada, Big Bus Tours is required to maintain a $5 million per vehicle insurance policy, and they're also required to have dedicated safety studies done on a regular basis in order to ensure the safety of the passengers as well as the safety of the transportation operations. We also would question the added congestion. And the reason why I state that is because of the fact that Big Bus is not proposing to add additional vehicles. They're simply wanting to utilize their existing fleet at dedicated stops that are carve-outs. So otherwise, you're not allowing the company to stop and start on Las Vegas Boulevard and otherwise congest traffic, but simply utilize bays such as that that exist at Monte Carlo, which are double-wide bays and clearly cut out so it doesn't otherwise interfere with traffic. Customer confusion, as we have addressed previously and as I noted in my overview, that can be remedied by having the on-street ambassadors, which are currently utilized by Big Bus Tours. And what those ambassadors do, Councilwoman Ross and members of the commission, is that they specifically identify for passengers what the vehicle is, whether or not it would be, whether or not it's an RTC bus or a Big Bus Tours bus, when the vehicle is scheduled to approach. And in the instance that they were provided an opportunity to do a pilot program, what that would facilitate is the assurance that if the bay was otherwise being used by an RTC bus and recognizing the priority of that, that at that time, the Big Bus tour operator would be instructed to make an alternative route or alternative stop to their route, excuse me, so that they would be able to then accommodate RTC scheduling. So again, the objective being not to interfere or congest traffic, not to otherwise do anything that would interfere with the flow of traffic, but rather to enhance the customer experience by using dedicated carve-outs, which we have otherwise determined based on the informal studies as well as the Silver State Traffic Study, do not interfere with RTC stops and/or with traffic.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that. And through the chair to Greg, your last comment to us as you finalized your report was this board giving staff direction to either one or the other, moving forward with a pilot program or directing Big Bus to go to the proper entity, public works department, whether it's the county or the city. I would recommend both. I think if Big Bus is confident that they can pull this off and they do it, well, we'll know that. And if they can't and it interrupts our times and causes loss of advertising revenue and other safety issues and all of these other things are not successfully mitigated, then they failed. And I think we need to give them that opportunity to do that. But at the same time, we'd direct Big Bus to contact Clark County Public Works and the City of Las Vegas Public Works to have this discussion about dedicated tourist tour bus zones. You're not the only company out there, and you recognize that as well, that they may want to participate in this. But I think this is an opportunity to let them pass or let them fail, and then we can move on.
If I could have one additional comment relative to the uniqueness of the service, and I think I've said this before, but it is an exclusive regular route service, and that is the authority that Big Bus Tours holds. This was an authority that was granted to Las Vegas Strip Trolley in the 1970s. And the difference is that the other certificated carriers, the scenic tour operators that are licensed by the Nevada Transportation Authority are irregular route carriers, which means that they're not allowed to have regular stops. So those stops that BBT uses currently are ones that have to be demonstrated to the NTA in terms of the map that I showed you earlier, and they have to be consistent with their timing. And any variations to that schedule must otherwise be approved by the NTA. That's not the same requirement that other scenic tour operators have because they don't operate over a regular route. So that is the difference between other tour companies and Big Bus Tours and why we believe that the request is unique and would not otherwise open the floodgates to other scenic tour operators coming in and wanting to utilize the stop. Additionally, other commercial carriers are strictly prohibited from stopping and starting on public thoroughfares here in the state of Nevada.
Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Kim. I don't support a pilot, and I don't think we need to study what we are hearing from our drivers, what we're hearing from our operators, what we're hearing from the others. And that's just no disrespect because I think you have a role, or Big Bus has a role to play. While they've got the exclusiveness, once we argued that there was a way to have them co-locate, you now open the door for any other buses to come in and argue, there's now a regular stop, so I should be entitled to that, even though you were the exclusive one back in the day. So I don't want to open that proverbial camel's nose under the tent. I think there's a way to work this out without interrupting our public purpose. And our public purpose is to move our employees, our tourists, our community in a safe, responsible, swift manner without impacting people. And I don't need a study to tell me that it's going to back up stuff. I don't need a study to tell me it's going to have a confusion for folks. Even though they pay more to get on yours, at some point, there's an undercutting that comes in with the public transit, and I don't want to even risk that part of it. The advertising for outdoor promotion, that ought to be another factor that's taken into consideration. I know you're not adding vehicles, but down the road, you know, I've been in politics long enough to see what happens down the road. So I do appreciate Councilwoman's point, but I think we can work with folks through the public works departments because I think there are ways to do some of that to accomplish what you need without jeopardizing our drivers and our routes. So I'm on the opposite side of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the designated tourist zone, could that not come back into the public right-of-way? Wouldn't they end up coming back to the RTC through county public works? I'm guessing a tourist zone would be somewhere on the strip, a cutout or right off the strip.
That's correct. That's correct. The tour bus stop that we would envision occurring that is available to them, the creation of those zones, those could be on Las Vegas Boulevard. They would invest in that type of improvement, and they would be able to be front of house, not back of house. And that's one of the reasons why we are recommending that they make that type of application.
And I support that. I also, I am in support of not saying no to the original proposal. I think more work has to be done. I don't see any, since we're not approving anything today, I don't have any problems furthering this conversation, although it's been a few years now. That slide on the overhead, it's an important one because regardless if it's a pilot program or a tourist stop, those are still going to be issues. I would encourage Big Bus or anyone else to take those stakeholder feedback issues and address them in far more detail than we've given you the opportunity here because I think some are legitimate, some increased maintenance costs, for example. Well, I'm guessing that's trash or additional things that need to be done at different stops. Well, that's merely who pays for the additional maintenance costs. So I think what I've heard over the last couple of months is you have a company that is providing a service in Las Vegas. They're already using our public right-of-way. They've asked on a very limited site-specific basis to increase the efficiency and experience for their customers. And I've been briefed by council that a pilot program, we hold the hammer. We can say no. It's not working before it even starts or after the first week or after the first two months. Or if it opens up the door and everybody's applying for these special licenses, I think we still have the ability to say no. This is going down the path that is going to be too much. I just, all those things that are listed on that page are reasons to say no. It's almost a bureaucracy in just a neutral sense. It's easy to say no, but I personally think that those no's on that screen need to be justified. What is the impact on time performance? We don't know. What's the impact to, I'm not sure, the customer confusion? We don't know. The only way, these are all legitimate potential impacts. But how do we know if those are real or are they just perceived? Or it could happen? That's why pretty much this pilot program approach, and we were talking two stops or four stops or very limited, I just, I felt that it was something that wouldn't have an overall impact and wouldn't open the Pandora's box. But basically, I would like to certainly support the recommendation to encourage Big Bus or anyone else to work with the county to identify a tourist stop. I would also like to allow Big Bus continued conversations with the RTC and maybe ask them to, in far greater detail, certainly share the report from whatever that third party was.
Silver State.
Silver State. And have them respond to all these stakeholder concerns. If they can't, then that's an easy decision. But to say that, boy, this could cause problems, let's not even attempt it. Balancing, I think everybody supports Big Bus is a nice company. It's creating a nice amenity in town. So I, I'm with Councilman Ross on this. I would certainly like to support and direct Big Bus to go work with the county to develop these tourist designations. But likewise, I would ask that Big Bus and anyone else in this discussion continue to either do analysis or create the mitigation on these proposed stakeholder feedback issues, not to drag it out any longer, not to say that, you know, this is going to allow them to go forward. But I just, I don't think, I personally don't have enough information that these are absolute no's, it's going to happen, it's going to ruin everything. So I don't know how that's formed an emotion. I certainly will leave it up to the board as far as if they want something more specific, but-
Chairman, can we maybe take a step backwards, just a small step backwards, and invite Big Bus to go out and meet with the county and with the city's public works department? And rather than actually acting on a motion at this time, just maybe, I don't know, would you do table it or continue it to a future conversation to, maybe in the meantime, you guys could have a conversation about these stakeholder feedback items? Is that-
That would be fine. I mean, I think we, in terms of restructuring what the ask is here today for the board, if what I've just heard is the board would be voting on whether or not to essentially redirect or encourage Big Bus to go to the proper jurisdictions for this type of activity and that the direction to RTC staff is to continue to engage in the discussions with those that are interested in this type of scenario, Big Bus and others included, that would also be impacted, and that we would revisit at the appropriate time whether to engage in a pilot program if it's appropriate. Perhaps Big Bus and others will be wildly successful with their conversations with Clark County and others about the tour bus zones. So if, we would be tabling, if you will, the decision on whether to terminate activities concerning a pilot program. That's, I think, what you've expressed, and that would be how you would state it.
That would be my motion.
Yeah. Commissioner G.
I'm more comfortable with that, but I'm, in my mind, it does not take a rocket scientist to know that no place else do they co-locate. Why are we losing the mission of what we're supposed to be doing, which is public transit? With no disrespect to try to help a private sector business be a little bit more successful or be a little bit more in the front of the house or be a little bit more visible, that's not our job. And so I begin to become offended that the issue and our mission has changed or is changing potentially under a pilot scenario. We have so much on our plate right now as RTC with short staff to look at Southern Nevada Strong. We just, from SNRPC, gave them the new role of the truly being the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We have planning issues that deal with public transit, not whether or not a private sector company- company can have a more successful place to stop by using our public tax dollars that we've already paid. So I'll support a delay, but I'm not supporting a pilot, with no disrespect. I think you've got a way to be able to work it out, to be successful, you've got to pay a little bit more money to do some turnouts, maybe, or something along those lines, but I don't think we need to interfere with what, I mean, I ride the bus. I don't know if everybody else around here does, but I do ride the bus. I've got to figure out how to put my bike on it, though. I need a lesson on that part of it. But that said, we have a role, and that's the role that we should really be focusing our energies and time on. So that's kind of where I'm at, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So to clarify the motion, the priority is to direct Big Bus to go work with whatever entity. That is the priority part of the, the potential pilot program or issues that have been identified are being tabled to a future date, and in the meanwhile, it would be up to Big Bus or anyone else to further mitigate, address, report back, with no impact on staff. I don't think staff's being asked to engage, draft up contracts, or anything like that. Is that? Okay. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I just wanted to ask, what is it you're hoping that the county or the city could do? If they go to the city or county right now, it's determined if the city or county would provide additional places for them? Are we still not talking about our RTC places, but maybe additional places? I see. Okay. I wanted to make sure.
But on, my understanding is on the public right-of-way, or immediately off the public right-of-way. It's not to say that we couldn't, and this is a hypothetical, the county could identify a potential tourist turnout that would be 100 feet away from a designated RTC.
I see what you mean.
I don't want to say it's completely separate, because it may be enhancing something that's existing, but that's up to them, that's up to the county or the city Public Works.
So it's more doing.
N dot may be dragged into this, Rudy, get ready.
But it's more than backing what Chris said, which was not new to like changing our strategy or our focus, but sort of putting it in the hands of the city or the county.
Very, very true.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, I think everyone is in agreement that it's a non-starter, if anything, not only this proposal, but if any proposal is going to adversely impact our system. That's a non-starter. So there's.
Can I comment to that, Mr. Chairman? I agree with you, and that's kind of what I want to see. I fully respect Commissioner June Kiliany's comments, absolutely. I think back to the video Ms. Quigley shared with us at the beginning of our meeting, Terry Jazinski from the LVCVA, and our role as a convention and visitors authority in that customer experience, when that customer gets off the plane, how are they treated in the taxicab, how are they treated on the bus, how are they treated in the limousine to their destination and throughout the valley. I think all of us are big proponents of public transportation, and I think this also is an element, even though it is a private company, is still an element of that transportation, certainly an element of the experience that our visitors have when they come to Las Vegas. And I've ridden the big buses in other cities as well, not as worldly-traveled as you are, but it was a wonderful experience, and.
No place do they share.
So I will, I guess, support the motion, but I'd rather like to see them pass or fail. I'd say, just do it, give them this pilot program, leave it works. If it doesn't, it's over with. We don't need to talk about it anymore. That's kind of still my position.
Mayor.
I would tend to agree with Commissioner Chris. Number one, we'd be changing the mission. I don't believe there's anything in the mission statement that refers to what has been proposed by Big Bus. And then, secondly, I like to look ahead way to the future, and looking at an earlier presentation, we're talking about an additional $10 million, and not too far in the future, 20 million additional visitors. And you can see that a future impact is going to be horrendous, just on the general transportation itself, let alone the addition of a bus stop having to do a share program of any kind. And that's why I would be, at this point, opposed to a pilot program.
Thank you. So we'll stay with the motion, and everybody understands that motion? Good. A motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, and including N dot jumping into the fray.
Thank you for your consideration.
On the advice of Director.
I have a thought process, thank you. I think the cities also do development agreements when they've got projects that come on board. So maybe part of, as they have their conversation, they're not the only business that's going to come in at some point, that maybe when we're meeting with folks where we know there's going to be a large impact, I'm thinking of Rockin' Rio, Electric Daisy, those types of things, that even our public transit can't handle that, that maybe we work with those, they work with those private sector, and they work out to identify a stop, they pay for that, but that gives them a different access point without restricting some of our folks. So maybe there's some opportunities to be able to take a look at something along those lines.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, that brings us to your last citizens' participation period.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, please step forward. I have some cards, we'll start with the cards. State your name for the record, and comments will be limited to three minutes. The agenda item on the grandfather clause, Patty Panisi. And thank you for phonetic.
Phonetically.
Phonetically.
Hi, good morning, thank you. I've been here before, so I'll just make it brief, because you all know the issue. Grandfather clause, ADA clearly states that if you are more than 3/4 of a mile from a fixed route, they do not need to provide door-to-door service. There are approximately 300 of us. In 2011, we were allowed to remain under the grandfather clause. 2012, remain. 2013, the board recommended that by July of 2015, if we were past the 3/4 of a mile, go to another location for the bus to pick you up. There's a Taco Bell by my house, I can't imagine what they would say if morning, noon, and night, buses were going onto their property to pick me up, as well as a lot of my neighbors. You can say, well, Patty, where would you draw the line? Two blocks, one block, 10 blocks? The line's already been drawn by the board. If you are over the 3/4 of a mile, as of 2013, you have been told, this is the law, and you'll have to make other arrangements. So please don't make me go through my couch cushions looking for coins for cab fare, and please don't make me walk to Taco Bell when it's raining and it's 110 degrees. I have lupus vasculitis, you have people in wheelchairs, walkers, people who should not be left unattended. So that's my issue. Moving on, since I'm going to be here next month, let me just tell you the people who work for you to make my life easy. You have dispatchers, you have drivers, you have reservation agents. You have Regina, Gwen, Heidi, Fay, Linda, Mary, Valerie, Drake, Carlo, Sergio, Nancy, Alex, Angelica, Ann, Ron, Jessica, Irene, Sylvia, Tamika, Cynthia, Mimi, Dave, Phil, and the most missed, recently departed, Vito. That's just a small amount of the people that I talk to almost every week when I make my bus rides. So I'm more than grateful for what you do. A neighbor will take me to the hospital with a shotgun wound at 2:00 in the morning when they should call 911. God forbid they should call me to say, we're going to go to the grocery store, or you want to come, or can we pick up two bananas for you? It's not going to happen. So just please, keep me in the grandfather clause, so I can retain my independence. And this is just a sampling of the folks who work so hard to make my life work. Thanks.
Thank you. Dennis Hennessy.
Panisi.
Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing me to come up and speak. When I say what I'm going to say, I know there'll be a lot of disappointment, but this month's edition of Dirty Driving will have to be put off till next month. There was something that came up that I think is a little bit more important. However, I do want to acknowledge that the GM for Keolius, the GM or the owner for Silver State Transportation or Silver State Cleaning, they did meet with me and come out to a bus. So I do think there is some concern to get our buses cleaner, but that's not why I'm here today. I'm here today to respond to some comments that Commissioner June Kiliany, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, made at the end of the last month's meeting, concerning the desire for people to become RTC employees. Meaning, I took it as meaning us drivers looking for RTC help for us becoming employees. Folks, I believe that that ship has sailed and has long sailed. There's no city, county, or state that's ever going to go back to employing a mass group of people back into the system. That ship sailed, that's not what we're asking for. I believe what we're asking for is for you folks to be an umbrella, to protect us. We're asking for the RTC to negotiate a contract with our union that'll apply to any vendor that you bring in. That doesn't make us RTC employees. We're asking you to be an umbrella, to protect our employees. I listen to county commission meetings, I hear Commissioner June Kiliany, I hear you passionate about local vendors doing the job. Right now, what you've done is you're protecting out-of-state, out-of-country contractors. Were the 800 drivers that we have in this, two years, guys, it's been two years. I heard Commissioner Ross and Commissioner G, that February that you announced MV and Keolius, you flat-out said, you better fix this, or it's going to go. Well, you guys are going to have to field the calls from the casinos, from North Las Vegas, when Mr. Lee calls, when his employee, when his citizens can't get to work, the casinos can't staff it when we go on strike in North Las Vegas. Two years without a contract, guys, we're just asking for you to be an umbrella for us, negotiate a contract, and then hold your contractors to the contract. That's all we're asking for.
Jose Mendoza Jr.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jose Mendoza Jr., President Business Agent for ATU Local 1637. First, I would like to make a comment regarding the red bus. The impact it might have if you do approve it is the $22 million that was received in the last fiscal year, that was received on the corridor. In addition to that, a safety concern would be is that the bus has two doors, one on the right and one on the left. And if you're doing the corridor, that's tourist. I used to do the strip when I was working for, back then, Viola. And you do have tourists that sometimes just want to get out when you miss their stop. And they don't understand that we're obligated to make the stops only at the bus stops. And sometimes they get very arrogant, they argue with the operator, and what have you. Say, for instance, you approve the red bus, one of those doors, it doesn't have a closing door, it's wide open, you might just jump. And guess what? There might be a fatality. So please, try to eliminate this red bus stop. Now, going back to my comments, I would like to say that the gentleman last year, Mr. Pate from MV, that he was here telling the Commissioners and the RTC staff that there was not going to be no problems, and everything was going to stay the same, and health, and while offering the whole works. Well, apparently, the man's not working for them no more. You should try to find out what happened. We're not happy with the contract, we're not happy with what's been going on, but we'll still keep on addressing our concerns, because that's our job. MV still is trying to undermine our economic package that we're currently enjoying, what we had under, what we have under the MOU, which was with Viola ATU. We used to enjoy 40-hour paddles, probably more than 40 hours, now they're cutting them down to 35, 36, or 37. What's the reason behind all this? The low bid. That is what's going on. Not only that, is that we're dealing with two companies. I mean, we've still got to represent both yards, almost 1,000 employees, and we've got to do our best. But we're not going to take a 1%, 1.5% from what they're proposing. In addition to that, they want to give us the ACA. And this is what we tried to bring to your attention before you voted to split the yards, not to do it, but we were ignored. Okay, RTC tells the contractors under the RFP not to violate federal law or state law. Under NRS 608.019, Meals and Breaks, that is the law. In an email I sent to the RTC, they tell us it's not our, I mean, it's not our doing, it's the contractors, they've got to preserve that. That's Meals and Breaks, that's Meals and Breaks for the operators. It's not happening. We already filed a complaint with the Labor Commissioner's Office regarding this, and we'll deal with it through the process. In addition to that, we filed a grievance. Now, we're asking you, what are you going to do to tell these contractors to stop violating state law? That's our concern, that's the driver's concern, there's a health issue behind all that. So anyway, in closing, real quick, like, Chris, G, we got your statement last month, and we appreciate you emailing us. We understand that you took a position in Chairman Brown with Team Sturz at that meeting. We're going to forward that email to our International and see what happens.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And try to keep it truthful when you're speaking on the mic.
Okay.
Unbelievable. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board this morning? Please come down, just state your name for the record.
Good morning, Chairman. My name is Mike Coeasely, but everybody calls me Mickey. You made a comment that you didn't know what the impact on the strip corridor would be. Well, as a deuce driver, let me explain the impact that it would have. Most of the bus stops that they want to use on the strip, they don't hold a streetcar or a deuce. So you're trying to add a third bus in there, somebody's going to be waiting. As it is, depending on traffic on the strip, depending on what's going on up here, whether it's a big fight or whatever, trying to get in and out, you'll have buses backed up. We have five and six buses backed up now. So you add another bus to that, and that's a problem. That's going to impact your on-time performance, that's going to impact the driver that's been sitting in that seat, that might have to go to the bathroom. There's nowhere for a driver to get off the bus, from Luxor to Fremont Street, or to the Premium Outlet to go to the bathroom. So you're talking about sitting in traffic for a long time, waiting on another bus. That's all I wanted to say to you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? And if there are any other speakers, you can come down and step up to the other mic. So this is our last speaker this morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
My name is Manny Voma, I'm with ATU, and I represent the mechanics at the Sunset Yard. I'd like to thank the RTC for providing us with more maintenance inspectors. We have seen a little improvement in the maintenance of your vehicles. And most of all, we'd like to thank MJ for making this happen. And I have to let the cat out of the bag, okay? Last week, we saw MJ in our pits, helping, overseeing the inspectors in fixing these buses. That's the first time we have seen a Assistant General Manager from RTC in our shop, and we appreciate that. And I'd like to thank your inspectors, Steve Gepard and his team, for doing a wonderful, a wonderful job. We still have a long ways to go, but I know we'll get there. Thanks again.
Thank you for your comments. Good morning. This is our last speaker, unless someone else come up to the mic. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this morning? Okay, these are our last two speakers, and I'll close public comment. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Robert Seibert. Just wanted to bring up a few issues with you guys. I've been looking at your roadway projects, I've seen the little item up there on your billboards. You guys just recently redid Decatur Avenue between, I think it's like Bonanza, all the way down to Lake Mead. Now, you guys had it all finished, looks great, now you've got someone digging up that road all over again. How is it you guys can't plan all these things together at one time? You know, you talk about inter-agency, talking to one another, planning things out. These people don't even put your road back down the way it's supposed to. I've seen that all over the valley. They dig three-foot hole right down the center of a lane, or the left, right-hand side of the lane. Here I come with my clients, they repaved it, ran the front-end loader over it instead of running the steamroller over it, now I'm bouncing the damn client all over the place. I'm a paratransit driver, most of our clients are hurt for one reason or another, you know. Your light project on Alexander and Torrey Pines, you started that project two weeks before the school year. It's still not finished. According to last week's newspaper, it's not going to be done until November 27th. Why does this take that long? There's a school less than a half mile from that inner. less than a half-mile from that intersection. If you guys are so concerned about pedestrians getting hit, obviously, you're putting this light up for that reason. And the last final thing would be Xerox Transportation Solutions. It was item 34. You're going to spend close to $700,000. And I'm assuming this is the MDT system that goes into the bus that works on a hard drive? It's a great system when it works properly. I really think you guys should be looking into something more on Android base, Android base, or on a tablet, something where you don't have to have a hard drive sitting up in the top of the cab. Because that hard drive getting beat up on the roads constantly, that's why we run into the problems after a year or two. You've got the systems resetting themselves. We hitting the roads, just put scratches into a hard drive, and then the system's no good. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as far as specific, like, for instance, the light, sometimes the RTC isn't directly responsible, so if it's city or county, contact directly. I know Councilwoman, Councilman Ross, we all will, it's easier to get directly to that representative to find out the status of those projects.
Okay, well, I looked up.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I'm not even supposed to say those things. I was just trying to steer you in a more direct solution. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Aaron Emanuel. I've been with the RTC Transit System since 1993. I was excited about the Bus Rapid Transit Program that we established. I was proud to start up the MAX line. My concern is we spent a lot of money for the bus lanes, dedicated bus lanes. Can future projects enforce the bus lane with law enforcement as vehicles cheat in the carpool lane? I drive Sahel, and I have to always fight traffic out of that bus lane and zig back in again. And what about bus stop curbs being painted red so we can safely load like other cities and enforce the bus stops? If you can go out there and check the bus lanes and make it safer for us to have our dedicated bus lane instead of dodging traffic in parked vehicles. That's all I have to say. And to make our bus rapid a lot better.
Thank you. Your comments are noted. Seeing or hearing no one else, we'll close this portion of public comment. This meeting is adjourned.